Mr. Olstead.
I am here.
Mr. Ripski.
Here.
And Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Top of the morning to you all.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Uh, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda today?
I have none.
I have none.
Nor do I. Uh, does the fire department have any additions or corrections?
No, sir.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, does the minister?
Just to note that we have the uh, end of month financials for January and February appearing on the agenda and those will be circulated for our uh, review and signature.
Very good. Thank you, Ben. Uh, and does the fiscal office have any additions or corrections?
We do not.
All right, thank you. Uh, that gets us down to um, our um, pending warrants. Uh, Ben, if you could put those on the screen. Today, we have pending warrants of representing three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-one cents. Uh, do the trustees have any questions on the pending warrants?
I reviewed them and I do not.
I have none.
Okay, Tom, may I have a motion?
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion. Hold on a second, I gotta get a little bigger so I can see it. Uh, I'm, I move, uh, we approve pending warrants amount of three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
I'll second that.
Thank you, David. All in favor, say aye, Tom.
Yes.
Dave?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes as well. Thank you. Okay, uh, that gets us down to our city liaison, Mr. Mike Durk is on the line. So thanks, Mike, for joining us. And uh, I'll turn the floor to you for any updates.
All right, thank you. Well, it's nice to be back here back in Columbus and able to talk to you at seven in the morning versus four. Uh, city council met last night. Um, several first readings on a lot of zoning, small zoning changes on parcels of land up around Beach Road and just kind of filling in odd parcels that New Albany Company's acquired and just incorporating them back into uh, New Albany and changing the zoning to fit with the rest of Beach Road. Two other things that that came up, we had uh, an architectural review committee a week ago and reviewed uh, the BrewDog uh, site that's going to be right on sixty-two and one sixty-one and uh, went through all the approvals of uh, architecturally and signage. Uh, some things they asked for were approved. They asked for a sign that went on the roof of the building, the entire length of the building, and that was denied fortunately. Uh, but uh, the building looks very good. It'll have awnings that that hangs out over the uh, uh, east side of the building for outside dining. Uh, and no, no idea on when it'll be finished, but uh, that was all approved through architectural. The planning commission did have a meeting they reported on uh, in council. There's a section of land where Bowman Grant on the uh, east golf course that's kind of known as the donut. It sits in the middle of the golf course, which you may or may not be familiar with. Uh, and it's undeveloped land. There were some preliminary plans reviewed with the architectural committee to put thirty-six uh, high-end lots in that section. Uh, and with two entrances into the development, one where Bowman Grant uh, was stubbed in originally, but another down by Head of Pond. So there was a lot of discussion uh, with uh, the second addition of a, a roadway off of Head of Pond and so that there were two entries into that property. It's all preliminary. They still have uh, lots of final work to be done to brought to the architectural review and so, and the uh, planning commission, but just want to let you know that that's uh, ongoing right now in terms of developing that parcel. And that was about it. Not much else going on in the meeting.
Well, thanks, Mike, for the updates. Uh, so I know that the published information on BrewDog is that it was going to be opening up this summer. Does that seem to be the plan still?
That's still, I think, the plan. No, no hard date was, was given, but that's what they're aiming for. Uh, and I think a lot of that original construction that was done when it was supposed to be prior owners has worked well for them. So I still think that's going to be the plan.
Great.
Official date, but it, the building looks really good. So.
Great.
It'll be a nice.
Yeah, it's gonna be great. And I think that's gonna really create a lot of uh, of excitement to that area and really just uh, it's gonna be neat, so.
Good news is they have lots of parking, so that's good.
Yeah, so when you say they have lots of parking relative to using uh, school parking, or wh- 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 where do you refer to that?
No, I think, you know, there's the, in front of their building and then down, there's a outbuilding like a barn, storage building. There's a lot of land down there that cars can park. So I think they have a fair amount of parking.
Okay.
And, and I think.
Story on the old Duke and Duchess?
Uh, well, they're gradually clearing that land. Um, no final uh, plans have been brought forth, but the plan will be that'll be let cleared out, leveled off, all the way down to six oh five. And New Albany Company is working on uh, some plans to bring forward for planning commission and then architectural review, but the intent would be, it would be retail space uh, along that section of the Rose Run there.
Great. Thank you.
It'll look like, much like Market Street or Main Street.
Yep.
You know, how they brought retail with the two-story Georgian look buildings. At least that's the plan that's been uh, talked about, so we'll see.
Thanks, Mike. I bet your golf game's pretty sharp, right?
Uh, no, it was frequent, but not good.
All right, that gets us down to the administrator and uh, Ben Callen is here. Ben, I'm gonna turn the floor to you. I know that you have a couple resolutions, but if you want to uh, discuss anything in your report, that would be great as well.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And uh, just to follow up on Mr. Durk's description of uh, that area of the Village Center, it's uh, currently described as Rose Run Two. You'll probably see some information circulating about that this year, uh, but it should be an additional um, amenity to the Village Center. Uh, I love that my Vista from my office window continues to improve. I can see the amphitheater, you know, the gas station is gone, BrewDog is right down the street. It's a, it's really neat place to be right now. On our uh, updates from the meeting report, I wanted to share that um, an issue's arisen with Charge Snyder. Apparently, our HRA funding account for twenty-twenty-one uh, was not loaded with the full amount. Um, an employee brought this to my attention. We're, we're currently working on it with our um, contact at Assured Partners and our customer service rep at Charge Snyder. Um, if you may recall, we designed our HRA to fully fund the potential out-of-pocket expense. And currently, it only has the deductible amount. So only the five thousand, ten thousand is loaded, not the full seventy-five hundred, fifteen thousand. So we're working on that and should have that result soon. Um, quick update on our lease. Uh, I've stayed in contact with the two interested parties. Um, the our current Innovate New Albany occupant is, is still interested in the space. Um, their timeline is a little bit limited. They would need to do something sooner than later. Um, this is the wedding uh, venue and entertainment business. Uh, they were just pointing out that their season gets pretty busy once the spring weather breaks for outdoor events. Um, the other interested party, their current budget would not allow them to occupy the space, but they can continue to look at um, different opportunities to uh, fund the space.
Yeah, Ben, what's our timeline on that? I know you mentioned with the bankruptcy uh, proceeding that there was um, I my recollection is there was a slight pause we wanted to take to see how that played out, but uh, if we want to move, can we move uh, forward with leasing the space?
The only technical issue with the bankruptcy filing, uh, the former occupant has petitioned the court to reject the lease. Uh, once that's approved, that's our official uh, go sign that we can lease the space to somebody else.
But at this point, they vacated the premises. They're behind on their rent. Um, I mean, we could effectively terminate the lease for cause, could we not?
We can. Um, you know, we could make that effort. We, we've certainly not opposed rejecting the lease. Um, it is more of a um, timing issue to ensure that as an administrative remedy, we can recoup the cost that occurred after they vacated the space. But we still have an obligation to relet the space uh, under the lease terms. Uh, so we're able to move forward.
Okay, I, I'll let Dave and Ben speak for, or Dave and Ben, Dave and Tom speak for themselves, but I'm, you know, we made the, the outreach to Aaron. Sounds like he can't afford it. Uh, my understanding is that the uh, the event venue folks are willing to lease at the uh, the prior terms. I'm fine with moving ahead with them.
Yeah, I did talk to Aaron yesterday.
Is to market the property. Um, I think it's great we got inquiries. Uh, I'm not really against any particular customer. If, if it's suitable for the, whatever the wedding business and they meet our requirements and then, you know, that, that commercial aspects of it, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I do think.
I'm sorry, do you have one other, what other steps would you want to take on marketing? I know Ben put it on a website and has, you know, been promoting it. Um, and that's the response that we had gotten.
I, I think getting a realtor involved and uh, possibly uh, uh, who has a broader access to the market or context, that's, that's my thought would be.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, a realtor is gonna charge us, what has it been, ten percent or more of the uh, the revenue?
Uh, at least, you know, typically twenty percent of the annual revenue on the lease base.
Yeah, I think everything is negotiable, but I also think that uh, you know, for us to see what type of the market is could be valuable too. There might be a lot more demand or maybe not, but if you got a, a, again, if you have a viable tenant and it meets our parameters, um, I'm not against it anybody at this time either. But I, I, I just think that if the tenant's gonna utilize the space and uh, it meets our, our, our commercial terms, great. Um, if they're going to do a lot of remodeling or construction or anything else, I just think, I think we need to make sure we know what we're getting into.
It's uh, it's my thought that uh, uh, first of all, make sure legally we can uh, rent it and uh, not have any negative repercussions uh, from the previous tenant. And if that be the case, then uh, uh, if we have viable uh, potential tenants, uh, we can enter conversations with them. The uh, uh, group that um, is looking at it and express interest, I did receive a uh, video kind of sharing uh, what they did, kind of a PR thing, and I was looking at it, or maybe I looked up, but anyway, we want to make sure, Ben, that we're, if, if that's somebody we're gonna consider, that their use of, of the property is compatible. Um, you know, I need to uh, make sure that there wouldn't be any um, any activity they would be conducting in their space that would conflict with what we're trying to get accomplished uh, with the township. You know, they are a um, a, a DJ, um, a wedding planning group and uh, I just probably need to have clarity on exactly what they're gonna use the space for.
Uh, sure, and uh, we could uh, provide his limitations, restrictions within the, the lease language. Uh, but just to recap, they're a current tenant at Innovate New Albany, using the space for, you know, professional office space, and, and that's the, the major component. Um, they would store their audiovisual equipment. They would conduct their business out of the space. They would meet clients uh, in the conference room uh, in the lease space. And then on the, the larger open room, they're proposing that that would be a cowork uh, space. Um, you know, professional office collaborators, those in the wedding uh, industry specifically, um, operating out of New Albany. Um, so that's the proposal. Well, I can um, look at some potential.
Yeah, get, get a final proposal and, you know, addressing, you know, uh, the concerns, because I concur with Tom, you know, I, what we've heard previously, I think was that, you know, they would be um, a, a compatible tenant, but wanted certainly make sure of that. Um, and, you know, continue to um, you know, to market the space and see if there might be a realtor that would do it at a, uh, at a reasonable commission. Um, they're considering the, the rent. Uh, but if not, if they're ready to go and um, they're compatible, um, you know, get a firm proposal from them.
Okay, then have, have you explored looking at, uh, working with the chamber or advertising the chamber? Do they have services like that?
Um, they, they do not. Uh, you know, I've reached out to the chamber just as a local partner about the space through their, their own personal network.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and just to confirm, there, there's no major remodeling or construction proposed. They would use the layout as is, although they would provide their own interior decorating and finishes. Uh, follow up on the uh, and health insurance support, we're, we're still training about seventeen percent over two thousand and nineteen on the HRA reimbursements. Uh, did take a closer look at our total twenty-twenty um, health ins- or insurance, employee insurance related expenditures. We actually experienced a decrease of two point five percent versus two thousand and nineteen, uh, so that was good to see. We do have two resolutions on the agenda regarding the pool. Uh, the first is to authorize the uh, first installment payment to Columbus Pool Management. And then the second is just to approve the membership rates uh, and daily rates and the hours of operation for twenty-twenty. Now typically, uh, w- we have a slate of additional activities a- and opportunities that are, are on the sheet. You know, right now, we're limiting this only to memberships and daily visits. Um, in the future, if we're able to accommodate, for example, swim lessons or um, you know, birthday parties at the pool, w- we can add those in. Um, but we wanted to be able to start marketing memberships and the fact that we will be open. So happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
The only comment I've got, Ben, is that I I, I realize we use the same format as prior years on that, uh, the rate sheet and the um, the um, the one attachment that you had. Um, it, I just thought that it might be um, it, it might communicate more clearly if at the top of that thing, it, um, you know, there were some disclaimers that um, said, you know, this is what we're doing in the pandemic. I mean, just to make it clear to people that um, that we're, we're doing our best to get the pool open and operated and it's gonna be a, you know, reduced version over prior years, uh, potentially. You know, what you had said about, you know, we'll layer things on if we have the opportunity. Um, I'm honestly still a little bit concerned from a financial perspective, and thanks for letting me know at the last meeting that our expenses are more like three seventy a year instead of uh, the three hundred I was remembering. Um, I'm just um, just a little concerned. I, I think that we should take all the steps we can to uh, to reduce the expense, you know, as we were talking about with the, the different uh, you know, water features and such uh, so that we can provide recreation, but you know, do so in a way that doesn't put us at uh, at a huge risk.
Sure, to that point, um, this uh, rate sheet is not what'll be circulated for, for publication. Uh, staff is finalizing language that will, for example, uh, notify membership purchasers that some features may not be open at all or might be open late in the season.
Right.
We'll need to notify them that they'll only be able to reserve a single swim session of two hours per day, reservable seventy-two hours in advance. Uh, that sort of thing. We, we will certainly provide that information upfront.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then, uh, you know, Bonnie has been working diligently with RecDes to ensure that we have the operational ability to input those parameters and make those changes. We, we've got those in place. We're basically benchmarking what has, what took place last year in the community as far as the number of days in advance you can reserve a session. The one session per day, how we're breaking out our sessions throughout the day and providing time to sanitize the facility. So really, all I'm asking for today is to approve the rates so that we can, can continue moving forward. Um, I did see that the governor announced, um, anyone over sixteen will be, have access to the vaccine by the end of the month. So that gives us, you know, two full months of vaccination for the general public for adults prior to pool opening, so that's great to see. And then reported out on the FEMA grant, we do have a resolution on the agenda for that. Um, just to recap, this was a two thousand and eighteen um, grant application that was awarded to the township to replace the fire alarm system at the fire station. Uh, it was officially accepted by the township in November two thousand and nineteen. We went through the process of appropriating and certifying the funds in twenty-twenty. However, um, the funds were not released by uh, FEMA. We're, we're at a point where we can move forward and we're just working through that same process again for this year. And that's all I had on updates. I've got the.
Okay, so we got a couple resolutions here. Um, the first resolution, we have A one. Tom, do you want to take this one?
Sure, uh, resolution two one oh three one seven eight one, resolution to authorize payment to Columbus Pool Management for the twenty-twenty-one pool management fees. I so move.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say yes, please, Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Dave, you want to take A two?
Sure. Uh, resolution uh, two one zero three one seven eight two, a resolution to approve the two thousand and twenty-one Plain Township Aquatic Center rates hours and schedule I so move.
I'll second.
All right, Tom seconded. All in favor, please say yes. Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right, that ends our resolutions. That gets us down to the zoning report. Uh, Ben, um, Mary, any comments on the zoning report?
Uh, glad to report that our trainings uh, were well attended and um, uh, were well received. We did record those, so when we have future uh, members um, coming onto the zoning boarding, Board of Zoning Appeals, they'll have that training available to them. I believe one of our trustees attended at least a, a portion of one of the uh, trainings. Um, but it was a really good thing to do for our members. Uh, had a couple of variances that were approved and a couple of additional applications. And Rocky Fort Black Look Accord uh, will review a proposed mixed-use development next to Ace Hardware again this month.
Right, thank you. So, can you go back to the Rocky Fort Accord? I just have a clarification. Do they have any binding authority or they're just, if I recall correctly, they they basically give um, guidance basically that's consistent with land use plans and development?
Yeah, the Rocky Fork Accord Panel makes a recommendation to the governing authority, um, where the property is located. It is non-binding. And there have been examples where the, the local government has made a decision contrary to the Accord Panel's recommendation.
Okay, yeah, I just needed to clarify, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Uh, that gets us down to the uh, road maintenance department. Is Bob on the line?
Uh, good morning. Um, hope you all are doing well. Um, I met with Mark Mullenax from Franklin County about the parking lot at the office and the, the approaches down here at the cemetery, some repairs down here at the cemetery to the blacktop. Uh, I also met with Eddie's Glass to get the window replaced at the office that has lost all of its gas in between it. Um, they're supposed to, they came and took measurements. It should be seven to ten days, they should have the window made and come out and install it. Uh, we had one funeral since the last meeting. Um, we got a bid from John Deere on mowers. It's it's way out of range. It was like the cheapest, they were, they was gonna downgrade our mowers to a different model of mower and it was gonna end up costing us like five thousand dollars. It was the cheapest scenario. There were three scenarios. One was five, one was sixty-five, and the other one was like seventy-nine hundred.
These, these are the new folks that took over uh, for uh.
Yeah, they.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't give us no deals.
Yeah, I, I found them to be a lot less flexible than um, than the other guys were.
Um, we went ahead and purchased blades and started servicing them and getting them ready for summer. We ended up servicing our Gator, uh, servicing the chain drive on it. And we tore the floor out of our trailer. Uh, it was, it looked very rotten on the top, and then when we tore it out, it wasn't as bad as I thought. We bought ten new planks to put on it. And we serviced the rear tires on the dump trucks. We put some valve extensions so we can check air on the inner tires. And we replaced a valve in the toilet down here at the shop because it was not shutting off. That's about all we've got.
And hey, Bob, the, the water leaks uh, were all repaired and are good at uh, maintenance?
Yep. They came last uh, Wednesday or Thursday. The guy from the city of Columbus, he just didn't make an appointment or nothing. He just showed up. And all he did was come in, walk back to the bathroom, turn the water on, go over and see if the meter was turned. Because our water usage has cut back so much that they couldn't believe that there wasn't something wrong with the meter.
Glad you got it fixed.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Uh, that gets us down to our next agenda item, and that is the fire department. Uh, Chief Rupp is uh, on the line with us. Chief Rupp, I'll turn the floor to you, please.
You're on mute, Jack, if you think you're talking.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, good morning, everyone. Uh, I'll make it really short for you. The fifty-four EMS runs, twenty-night fire run since the, uh, the last meeting. Uh, you can see the highlighted ones there, which are the assisted living facilities. Uh, we had uh, one resolution F one, which Ben already uh, discussed for you. Uh, there'll be uh, uh, two follow-up resolutions to this one, uh, an F two and an F three at the April seventh meeting, which will be one for uh, the purchase of the devices and the uh, notifier panel, and the second one will be for the installer. That's it.
Hey, Jack, did you need uh, approval from us on that uh, that travel for later in the year? I know that you, you had mentioned that you and Ben had discussed that and Ben concurred.
Uh, well, yeah, the, the one, the one piece, the, the only one is the one that would be the out-of-state travel.
Okay, do we need to, to give you a formal motion this meeting, or um, can we do that next meeting?
No, well, that, that one, uh, that, there is a uh, fee uh, increase after today, and so that's why I wanted to, to get that one particularly taken care of. The other one falls within the spending and within the spending limit. They both fall within the spending limit, but
Sure.
Uh, one's in station and one is out of state.
Yeah, and I know that uh, you had mentioned uh, that uh, both those firefighters have been vaccinated, and so I'm fine with it. If you need a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel.
Uh, that would be great.
So, we're adding a resolution or a motion that's not on the agenda is what we're proposing right now?
Well, it's, it's not, it's the, we don't need a resolution because it's within the fire department's spending limit.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just the one where we said that we had to approve all out-of-state travel and um, Jack had sent that memo last week, I think it was, that uh, requested it, and I asked him for a clarification on
um, right.
You know, whether or not they had um, discussed and approved, and he said Ben's in concurrent, so I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Who, who are the two firefighters?
Uh, well, the one that, for the out-of-state travel is uh, uh, Brad Essex.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that we approve the out-of-state travel for Brad Essex for training purposes.
I'll second it. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, we have a resolution two one zero three one seven F one. A resolution, a resolution to certify and appropriate and transfer funds for the FEMA two thousand and eighteen assistance to firefighter grant to purchase the install a fire alarm system for the fire station. Um, any discussion?
No, I'm fine with it.
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, I'll move on it. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dave seconded. All in favor, please say yes.
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 And I'll vote yes as well. Okay, thank you, Jack, for the brevity and hope everybody's doing well and look forward to talking soon.
All right, thank you. And everybody is doing well. And we're starting to accomplish some outside training since we're getting a break in, in the weather.
Good. And Jack texted me and we'll set up some time to talk.
Okay, thank you.
The township fiscal officer, Bud Zepatelli is on the line. Bud, what did you want to report out regarding the fiscal office?
Well, the only thing that we have on the agenda is the permanent appropriations that we need a roll call vote on. Other than that, that's it for us this morning.
Okay. Thank you. Dave, do you want to take this resolution?
Sure. Resolution 210317B1, the resolution to approve permanent appropriations for 2021. And the details attached there and I would move adoption.
I'll go ahead and second that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ripski?
Yes.
Mr. Homestead?
Yes.
And Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. How's everything in the fiscal office going?
Everything's going really well. Would have loved to have had an executive session this morning for some discussions, but I understand Mr. Homestead is pressed for time this morning. So we can do that first meeting in April because it will take a few minutes.
Great.
Okay, sounds good.
One other thing, I just want to call out Ben and Courtney for the phenomenal job that they have done working together. You know, Ben has been such a big help in Courtney's training. It's, it's just really been a very, very nice transition. Obviously, you, you guys are aware of some of the bumps in the road that we have had, including that with Julian and Grube. But really, it's been phenomenal to see the two of them working together via email the way I have.
Well, thank you, Ben and Courtney, for your professionalism. That, that really is very important and it's great to see that we have a good culture there. Specifically to the Julian Grub situation, can, can, can you give me just a, what is your assessment and what are the issues? I've seen a lot of email traffic and trustee Homestead was questioning some balances. And I, I just need to understand why are we having problems with this institution?
Sure. And again, I'll be brief and let Courtney and Ben jump in on this. But what had happened is, first of all, our financials were filed timely as, as required. There was an error found and it was a, an error basically that's attributed to these transition from OTAS to VIP. And apparently, the, our guy at Julian and Grube did not record it the way we have recorded it in the past. And he is attributing it to the software transition. I'll let Ben and Courtney jump in at this point, but that's, that's basically it. Bottom line is, we have filed timely. The question became, do we refile? Or do we, you know, wait and, and see if it is something that the auditors find important? And if so, you know, explain it at that point.
And the, the one question I had is, and Dave, my question was, the email I sent last night was just on understanding year over year expenses, not questioning whether or not they were correct. Not that you said I didn't or I was, but just wanted to make that clear to anybody who was listening. And were the expenses as stated, were the overall, were the total expenses correct? And was it just a problem that we had with a footnote that had an incorrect balance? Is that, is that the overall problem that we have?
Ben, I'll defer to you and Courtney on that.
Mr. Homestead, the, the total general fund expenditures were reported correctly, but one of the distributions was not correctly allocated to its proper class.
Okay, so we had something that, that was in the wrong category, but our total expenses are correct? Is that, okay.
It's a misclassification, it sounds like.
And in the past, a misclassification, less than 7% of the fund expenditures has been considered minor. If, if it is an issue, you know, we could certainly point to some transition challenges, the different accounting system. Personally, you know, I find it frustrating that Courtney and I took the time to look through the financial statement to report back to Julian and Grube and identify the different things that needed attention. And the accountant didn't catch that.
But then what I'm hearing is that we had it right in VIP, but Julian and Grube just displayed it wrong as they prepared the footnote. Is that a correct statement?
More or less, yeah. I mean, it's.
So it's, if it's a case where we didn't have it misclassified in our internal books, but they presented it wrong as they prepared their footnote, I wouldn't even think that would be a misclass issue. But I'm going to leave that to you guys and I apologize. I do have to go. So have a great day, everybody.
Thanks, Dave.
See you.
Great day.
Hey, Ben, I'm in agreement that, and Courtney and Bud, that we just, you know, let it ride and wait till, you know, the audit and see what is brought up at that time.
I think it's also important to note, as Ben has, has mentioned in the past, we, we break out, we are one of the townships that break out our general fund expenditures and a lot of them don't. And, and I think that that, you know, it was to our disadvantage in this particular situation. Am I stating that right, Ben?
Yeah, when I look at the other township financial statements that Julian and Grube prepares, for, for whatever reason, they're, they're not all following the same format. And, you know, in this particular case, Julian and Grube reported our 2019 and 2020 for comparison. So that's a little bit of a difference in the format. I, I don't know that it's material, but it did catch my attention that they're using a different format for us. Something to look into for the next time.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any old business?
I have none.
Nor do I. Any new business?
Not this morning.
Nor do I. Any citizens' comments? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and motion for adjournment. May I, do I have a second?
Yes, my second.
All in favor, please vote yes. Tom?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Mr. Homestead had to leave the meeting. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Yep.
Drink lightly today, guys.
Yeah, take care.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a great St. Patty's Day.